Time. May. Say to me. Is the memo that you received, the different options for competing with the other self by by checking who's in the plan. You all keep thinking of a slide up and down. So some options and some wondering if there's none of knowing that. So, um, I think there's options.
Okay.
And. Actually, uh, let's see more. That's true. In the while, yeah, um, to develop planning, building, building, uh, costing of the big ones. So that's kind of, um, submission for that. Um, because while the, uh, uh, these, uh, these immediate applications, usually like money associated with that. But, um, there's a point I was planning to expect, um, I don't know that. There's also anywhere like bracket, a cost estimate for mining. That has to be better than local, that's an additional term, seven thousand dollars. Um, and then, that's the first one, something idea of something to the meeting about the financing to, you know, get through the project. And, um, that's just perfect. Like, um, admitting with open options. The students are coming, what's up? Okay. Uh, so, uh, while it's circumventing. And, uh, should be noted that. What's in something, um, since we, we don't need to, even if. But, and it is on another project. Want a, in a new. Cause, um, participant funding in. So, um, but. I, and. It's going to be kind of up to the, me forward towards, would be some plan and some. And, hold on, maybe you're all just thinking.
In my mind, that's. That's right. Comments, I think we've got, we have a, been some more people. I did not. That's the floor. That's, I think that's simply done in. I think that, uh, in, don't, not that, that any other. And I think. We are here, and I do not care, this is part of the, um, more than we need. And to.
Like. Do you know anything about that barbecue out there? Blackstone Grill.
What? I love the barbecue. What time, where?
Yeah, I think even the memo, I think, was, uh, no offense to Director Jeff Angellon. But to say that some of these people, uh, to editorialize this memo and say that some of these people don't even live in the city. You know, that's probably true. But one of them lives right next door to the park. The other one lives a mile straight down one road. And has got great input in what we do. In fact, he was just appointed to the city's historical preservation committee. So I don't think we should. I think stakeholders that live adjacent to the park have just as much to say about it as somebody that lives in the city. So again, to repeat, I don't think we should spend any more money unless, of course, it's on historical uh, survey of that, which probably costs about fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, and it can be, that could go out to RFQ process by a person to do that. I think that would give us data points a year from now or eighteen months from now to help all of us make a decision. We have way too many projects on our table now to devote staff time and more money to this, in my opinion. So that's my proposal.
There's, um, just a couple things. First of all, um, that I apologize if the memo came across as editorializing. Um, there was a comment that was made by council that specifically said that some people in groups weren't even involved or that were involved weren't even city residents. And so we just wanted to point out that is, is the concern, uh, because we heard of council that we shouldn't be always listening to, uh, taking um, equal weight to every resident that's stated, even though they may or may not be in the city. And we heard specifically, well, that person's not in the city, we should just like.
I agree with that, Doctor and Director. But in this case, I think it's all specific to what the cause is. I think there's a lot of reasons why we should only, a lot of issues we should only listen to citizens. But in this case, I think people who live next door to the park should have this much say, somebody that lives two miles away.
Great, fair. Um, the other comment is the, the option, uh, for putting master plan on hold and letting, uh, a, a year go by where a group has the opportunity to develop a plan. Um, we strongly encourage that we enter into an agreement with that group so that we can be very clear of expectations. For example, want to make sure that, uh, city staff is involved in the development. But we would not want to have happen from staff's point of view is pause this, step aside. And then in a year, we present a report and then say, well, there's a bunch of assumptions. There's a bunch of items on here that we think you should be considering. And so we have to pause that and extend it out even more to go pass and back and forth. We would like to be able to have in that agreement, the city staff would be represented, uh, at routine meetings and be able to provide input comments back to as we proceed through that year.
I think that's always a good idea. I'm just surprised that it has to be so formal. Maybe in the city it does, but we should also afford anybody, any other citizen, since it is part of the public outreach. Any other citizen wants to have that input as well, so.
I think that that's what Jennifer was indicating, that the director museum indicated this, or these typically will go out to an RFQ or RFP for groups to do this work. Um, the benefit to, as I understand it, which may not be completely, is that this work from the citizen group that's requesting to do this would be for, uh, pro bono, so at no cost to the city. Um, we don't anticipate that if we put out an RPRQ that that would be a zero cost to the city otherwise. Uh, what Jeff is trying to say is on any of, any other RFQ, RFP, there would be a professional agreement or a random of understanding. In any case, when anyone's doing business with the city, and that is to ensure liability, um, en- ensure that the cities do, pretty share responsibilities, et cetera, are taken care of. And so that's a very beautiful process that can be done easily.
Yeah, I don't think that group would mind an MOU. It's just that, uh, is it really doing business with the city there despite someone else?
They would be.
Their ideas forward.
It's city, it's city property and a city structure, and they would be doing, um, essentially.
It would be, I agree with the memo of understanding to begin with. So everybody knows their expectations and their limitations as well.
And, and I would assume that we would only be accepting one group proposal. I mean, let's, let's say we have, if we were to go down a path where we had a group come in, provide a proposal and give that group one year. We haven't offered that to anybody else to say, citywide, would everybody who wants to provide input on this, please? You have a year to provide input on, write us a report. Is it just one group or is it any group who wants to?
Well, again, I don't see, uh, it having to be that formal. It's, uh, we're just allowing time for anyone, including this group, to develop better ideas, all part of the public outreach. That way we don't circumvent, you know, public outreach.
So if I can restate what you're saying, that in this year, you're saying it would not be an exclusive agreement with this group. We would open it up to anyone that would want to put together a plan to include cost estimates and funding for the Sonic Lodge.
Well, not necessarily.
Maybe, so let's take some other questions and then we'll, we may we can come back to it. Um, and I do want to acknowledge, like, it's arrived about ten minutes ago, I think. Seven to ten, I'm just trying to get that in there. Um, okay, Councilor.
Yes, thank you. So, um, does, uh, staff have any recommendations on this proposal? Or you just want to have a discussion with us about what we want?
I'd like to request it's a bit of a break. With staff outside, no?
My only comment on this, uh, I, I think that having as much input as we can is always great and better than just having limited info. My only concern is that we started this Crescent Creek Plan Master, Master Plan Process in two thousand sixteen or seventeen, and here we are in two thousand twenty-three. That's my only concern is that we continue to move this forward and say, well, we're going to look at something else or look at something else. That's why I'm sorry, it was just taking such a long time.
And I had, when we did the, um, public, the survey after the open house and all that, we got quite a few responses. Um, we didn't ask specifically about the Sonic Lodge, and I sort of wish we had in hindsight, but, um, I do think there's a lot of opinions all around, and I would be curious what the public. I had, I have a hundred and almost two hundred people that are on the mailing list for updates. And, um, yeah, I'm kind of curious what they think and if we should pull them or flash vote type of thing. Um, especially after people would find out how much it costs, considering other priorities within the city.
So I, whatever we do, I sure would like the parks commission to be involved, and I don't know how that is. I think there was one thing in here for the parks and a public hearing. So if we're going to involve a group or we're going to have an MOU with a group, uh, something like that with the city. I, I like to see the parks, uh, commission somehow involved in public hearing as well.
From, from the staff perspective, though, to your question, there, as you know, on the budget, there's many other items that are requiring Jeff and Jennifer's time. And so it's not like if this goes off the work plan that they will have nothing to do, there's plenty. And so from that perspective, if we give nine months to a year to allow for, um, a potential plan that could come up with, you know, construction costs and, uh, funding, you know, I think that could be a benefit to the city. Um, I think in taking what, what Jeff just said to heart, communicating that out to those that were participating in the park, anticipating that they would be able to, you know, either plan for it with it or plan for, I don't know, whatever they envision in the place of it, you know? I think how we notify the public, if that's council's decision, is going to be important so that they know that their participation in the process was important. And it's kind of being paused for now, and it's not that it wasn't important. Um, so I think that that would be beneficial. The secondary one would be the, we talked about the, the meeting with the architect and the consultant with broad public input, you know? I think it was a six hour.
Eight hours.
Eight hours with them to kind of put together just some loose sketches. And I think that would be the secondary priority. The other is just quite frankly, too expensive for the city's current budget circumstances. And so we would not recommend going down that road at this time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Henderson.
Lots of questions. First off, um, I'm hoping that if we do pause this and we allow this group to go ahead and come up with, I don't know what level of design, we can talk about that later, but, but it's also open to the public. This is not a private facility that they can exclude other people with. So I would expect it to be completely open to the public if they want to go to the meetings. Um, otherwise, it's going to look like we're giving favoritism to a single group. The second, uh, comment I've got is assuming that we say, okay, let's pause, let them go ahead with design. So they come up with a design and a cost estimate and everything else and funding, it's still a city building. So at some point, we've got to decide, do we want to keep that building? Which means, do we expand public funds on building the concept they've come up with? Which could be a lot more than we want, who knows? Or if we say let them do it, then we've got this whole issue of we're letting private sector folks, even with their money, renovate, build, construct a city facility. But I think there's some big questions there, because the last thing I want to do is get down this road and have them come up with a design and we say, well, you have to give it to us and we're going to send it out and. I mean, I just don't want expectations to be set and then all of a sudden at the end, everybody thought about, well, what are we actually going to do at the end when we have a design in our hands?
That's, that's sort of the agreement that I think Jeff was talking about. So that everything is, if the council decides to go that way, so everything is set in stone and there's no surprises about at the end, if they come up with a plan and the council chooses not to do it, right? That's your purview as council members to, to choose that.
But it has to be clear to the group, though, if they expand funds, because, I mean, I guess somebody's doing it for free, but still it could be some cost. All that, it's on that, because we just don't want to get ourselves in a corner, so.
Thank you, Councilor Martin.
So, what I'm hearing from Councilmember Henderson, there are public-private partnerships set up across the nation on different things, and parks is one of them. And that's a very common thing, public-private partnerships for that. So as I was thinking, Jeff, about what you were saying, you know, an MOU that would be built in such a manner. Um, there's very, very huge projects, such as the big dig in Boston with a public-private partnership. That didn't go really well, took a long time to get done, but that, I mean, there was a lot there. This is a much smaller problem. So I think there's an opportunity to develop something like that, to encourage people with that and make sure that the city is protected. I'm also mindful of some of the feedback that we got that it want, the people that were living around, they wanted it to be a neighborhood park, not necessarily a community park. Been concerned about parking and having many people going up. If a building is built, which could allow up to a hundred and fifty people, I think was one of the reference points. Um, you know, what's the ordinances for parking and all that? So I think there's those conversations that we have to have. And so we're going down a couple of parallel paths. And then the last thing that I don't know that we fully have determined is whether or not that building is a story. The city believes, if I recall correctly, that it is not. And, and yet there's others that believe it is historic. Um, I think in there was referenced some of the CCC work that was done and some of the buildings there being built in thirties. The school was built, I think, in nineteen ten. So there's some open-ended questions that I think we have to run some parallel paths to make sure that we're all in the open, that we don't get this one proposal hopefully in twelve months. And then go, yes, but what about this, what about this? And yet those are issues that were brought up by people who can say, we're making a significant change to this building that would not keep in, keep it within the historic realm, if it is a historic building. I don't know if it is or isn't right now, but I think there's some things that we're going to have on parallel paths. Continue on with this.
And, and I, I think that that agreement, memorandum agreement or whatever we have, will help to define what the expectations would be to answer the historic question, to answer, um, what's going to happen when you, if, if you do build a building that houses, that can, is an assembly type use with a hundred and fifty people? Is, is that, uh, what's going to be considered for that? And who's paying, uh, the impact fees? The idea is that there's going to be funding options available to bring somebody in. Uh, you, you're going to increase the traffic impact, these, the sewer general facilities charges, who's paying for all that? Because it's, that's not small dollar ones. Those are hundreds of thousands of dollars in addition to the building construction costs.
As well as long-term management and maintenance of, yeah, if they do have events or weddings or whatever, who's working on Saturday to make sure that that goes on?
In terms of the historic part of this, I think it's easy to get a little bit confused on this. I'm not a hundred percent an expert, although I've worked on historic properties throughout my career. Um, the building, from the analysis that was done by the consultants, the building itself were not qualified for the historic register, either locally or state, because it's been modified too much. However, what DAP did say is that because a structure has been in that location for such a long time, that that in itself is, gives it a historic kind of place type of a, a designation. But the structure itself would not qualify for that. But the fact that there has been a building there in some way that you may look at it, um, that built, the fact that the building's been there for that long, does give it a, kind of a historic place-making type of nature. So we're, we don't believe that a historic structure report is necessary. We believe we have enough evidence that that is not it. But we do note that the building, a building has been there for over a hundred years, and therefore that makes that place to that level of historic designation, not necessarily on a register, but definitely something that does have a build, it adds to the community fabric.
Thank you. Councilmember Barbara.
Yes, thank you. Um, I am in favor of pausing the process for a predetermined that ends on X day, and I'm thinking twelve months. And at the, during that twelve-month process, I think that whoever this group is, has a MOU, they're working with staff as needed so that they're not, it's not, it's a partnership more than it's off on their own, kind of like, like Councilmember Martin was talking about. Um, I also think that the report that comes back to us in twelve months needs to include funding that has been secured because we just don't have the budget right now to renovate the building or to build a new building. And I think that we need to not only know what the plan is for it and have that plan be discussed with the community, and by the community, I mean the people who use the park as well as within Get Harbor. Um, I think we need to talk about what's being discussed so that at the end of twelve months, we have enough information to make a determination. But I'm not interested in putting public funds for these, additional public funds, yes, right now.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lincoln.
Yes, thank you. Um, I appreciate the efforts and the energy coming from the community. Uh, I echo a lot of the comments made, particularly in Councilmember Roenberg about not putting staff on, or maybe tools anymore. I feel like it's a hard decision, but it's, from my understanding, not going to be demolished for quite some time. I feel like if we move forward and we have an MOU with a group, there's two things I'd like to see with that. I'd like to see that group keep open to the public, that they have their meetings that are open to the public, so people who are interested can participate. I would like to see them, like, maybe in the MOU, we give them a list of, here's five questions and five things that we want to accomplish and meet those. But I think the partnership of having staff have to work with this group, I, you know, as Katrina and Jeff talked about, they have a lot on their plates. And so if this group, you know, because the demolition isn't happening anytime soon. Um, you know, with the Park Master Plan, so I would like to see the ability for public involvement and that for them to handle it. If they want to go through with clearly delineated questions at the end of this time, we would like to see one, two, three, four, five, these meetings need to be open to the public, advertised, because it's going to affect the whole city. But, um, I agree also, I don't think that this is a good use of funds when we put up all the other projects that we're dealing with. And I appreciate, you know, the work, but again, I mentioned this last time we talked about it. I would like to see, maybe we take pieces of the wood and knock it out or have a bronze sculpture that remembers the families, remembers the masons. We have some of the, you know, pictures, artifacts put into the history, we can honor it without extending all this at all.
Thank you.
Because I think, uh, key to that MOU is the group has to understand that ultimately it's got to comply with all the city, city codes, including parking, including everything. And they should work closely. We don't want them to go down one road and nine months from now find out that doesn't come close to complying with that. And I have no problem spending public funds on it. Uh, a year from now, we'll be looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, and we'll be budgeting for things new. And a lot of the projects we already have will have, that we need to be working on now that we're uh, not because we don't have the staff time, will be completed. So we'll have additional staff time in a year now, as well as more money. Yeah, the park's got a lot of money.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Yes, so in this public involvement, I want to make sure the public has an opportunity to speak. And just continue these meetings, but also have input and to speak. And, and I also agree that, um, funds should not be expended on this project at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson.
And, um, so Jennifer, this splits off and goes down its own path, how is that going to impact the Crescent Creek Master Planning process for the park itself? Is there, is there going to be a way to link the two if they come up with a design that, I mean, it's part of the park, although it's not a separate part of it, we don't want them coming up with a design that wouldn't match them with the master plan for the park.
Um.
Architecturally, I guess, would be the.
My understanding is that that would be on hold until.
Also, the whole, the whole project.
We suspend the contract. We have to.
And, and just as far as public funds being expended, they're going to have to expend funds anyway, because if they're going to write an MOU, it's going to take us time. You got to go to Daniel and get it legally looked at and get it come up with it, it's going to be some time.
I hope it will be brief, I guess.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember.
Yeah, it's part less time and part less money than, than doing something now. Uh, and, and I'm confident that you can't do the master plan of the entire park until we really know what we're going to do with the building. It's got to blend together. Uh, I don't think there's a rush to, for that, even for that park. It's, that dirt sat there for a thousand years. The park is, that is, exists now, it's been there, uh, I don't know, ninety years, seventy-five to ninety years. So, and it's being well utilized, as you know, I live four doors from it. And, uh, I just love seeing people out there having a good time. And, uh, and it's not overcrowded at this point, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Lincoln?
Yeah. Were you first?
No, you were first.
Oh, okay, great. So is there any, like, simple projects we could do for the park? I know that there are several people who have written and talked about, like, the reserve of the tennis courts or just what we would call loving. Is there something small that we could do to improve that park that wouldn't be terribly, you know, cost prohibitive? That wouldn't necessarily interfere with the long-term plan as well? I don't want to, want to let that happen.
I haven't really gotten to that point. Like, we had, for the sweet out was just some initial, like, very basic sketch drawings based on the public surveys and what they wanted. I mean, and parking bathrooms were the top rated things, so that's expensive.
Yeah.
You might recall, if you, this was a little bit ago, time-wise, but the city was very close to adding two more sand volleyball courts there. And that was put on hold at that point and was told, let's just look at this holistically through the master plan process. And so those have been sitting there, a lot of people waiting. Here, right in front of here, if they can put more sand volleyball courts. We had the sand volleyball group ready to do most of the construction and paid for most of the bill to get more sand volleyball courts, but we've said, oh, these holes. Court surfacing, we have had a group that has offered to come and do the surfacing on behalf of the city with the condition that they be for pickleball courts. And so we said, we want to see before you just convert our tennis courts to pickleball courts, what the input is to the master plan process. So if you could, there are both needs, but they could have an impact if you check those off with the changing of what the intent is or what the guidance is from the public and council as you proceed through the master plan.
They dump that through there in the old garden and stuff. And we check them.
Yeah. Councilmember?
Exactly what we just, you just discussed and you asked, is why I don't want us to extend this more than twelve months. The entire time I was on the Parks Commission, the wanting to do the master plan for Crescent Creek Park was one of our highest priorities. And it goes back before I was on the Parks Commission. I think you mentioned twenty sixteen. We have been trying, we, the community has been trying to redo this park for years. So I'm, I'm okay with postponing it for a year. I'm not, I'm not okay with postponing it beyond that. We really need to address the needs that people have been bringing up for hundreds and hundreds. No.
Thank you. Councilmember Roenberg?
Yeah, I, I think I sent all of you on council the information on the health effects of pickleball courts. And if I haven't, I will. And they're, they're negative health effects. And right now, they play pickleball there, and you can hear it for half a mile away at six o'clock in the morning. And the police have actually been called there a couple of times for that. So I, I think when we take these surveys and we ask people, what do they want in that park? They say pickleball courts, but they don't know that there's going to be six at the sports complex. There's going to be nine down at the M-Math place. There's several over at Zimmel Park. So they don't realize that. They want more pickleball. Well, it's coming. In my opinion, it should not be at that park.
Have they, have they been, police been out since the signs went up? The signs went up in May?
I'm sorry, yeah.
We put up some signs about hours to play pickleball in May, I believe. So has it, do you know? I've gotten complaints about the signs. No.
I'll ask the resident that was across the street.
Is that Jennifer?
Wakes up in the morning, sees if it's sheltered or not.
I think I've spoken with her.
I spoke with a resident there who was one of the people who had complained, and she said it's much better.
I answered that. Okay. Yeah. So I'm hearing consensus to wait, but on hold, the whole process on hold for one year. And to the day. So.
And develop an MOU.
Develop an MOU, make sure that the city is involved in that process so that we're not getting hit with a big surprise and they're not getting hit with a big surprise at the end of one year. Councilmember?
So to that point, I'm in agreement with the whole, the twelve, we have to message, right? To all those who came to the wonderful open houses that we had, in giving input into this park and thinking things were going to start rolling. And now we're saying, put the brakes on. We have another group. And I think it's important for us to determine now the financing. What happens with any current funds that we have now that we have allocated to this to keep those encumbered for this particular park is the proposal coming forward that there will be private funds being expended to build this building. I don't know that I know that as of yet. And I think it's important in the MOU that we understand that so we can communicate that to people. And if others want to be able to propose something for this property that we're open enough as a public entity for others to come forward. And so, as you mentioned, Jeff, I think that's very important for us to do so that we don't have someone saying, what the heck's going on here? We didn't know about this. We would have proposed Y, they're proposing F. And I think it's lovely that we have a group that wants to propose something different. Don't get me wrong, that's wonderful. But I also know that we have certain regulations that we have to work with them.
Would, would anybody be in favor of like surveying the list of interested parties or citizens at large or anything about it, or would you rather have costs first?
I'm not sure. I think we just say we're not going to spend any more money.
We'll know what, uh, costs for a remodel or costs for.
I don't.
No, I don't think so.
I don't think we entirely know that it's going to be private funding. And since I'm speaking. I don't think when we go out to those people that did come to the open houses, we should say it's on hold because we are a drawn group. Nice. I don't think that's proper. I think we should say it's on hold because we have additional information and we're gathering additional information. Can't blame it on the group. I think it's, we needed more information anyway. Now we're just getting hold on more of it.
Councilmember?
In the interest of transparency to our citizens, I think they do need to know what exactly is going on with this. And if there is another group involved, they need to know that there is an interested party coming forward. I mean, let's be transparent about this, because that would be horrible if we decided to go with somebody else and they said, we didn't know anything about this and we didn't tell the people. So, yeah, we need to be transparent about this.
Yeah.
Maybe a quick summary of how we got to this point. There was questions brought up about demolition. A group came forward, had ideas of how to not demolish a building. And so we're allowing that to occur so the council can be better informed before making such a great decision.
Great, exactly. Exactly. That's what I was going to suggest. Okay. All right. So do you have clear direction? Is there anything else that you need to ask council right now or just go out for a or contact that group and whatever you're going to do?
Yeah, I think put together topics for an MOU and have that discussion with the group and.
We can make it clear to them that it's an open process.
That'll be.
If for whatever reason they're not amenable to the terms that we would have to go by, we'll come back to council, you know.
Yeah, I don't know what's involved when we put the MOU together, but I would suggest engaging them in the process. I don't think we should come up with an MOU that I've seen happen in the past where it's one-sided or misunderstood and say, this is the MOU you like it. I think that MOU should be developed with them as well.
And then those come back to council for vote. The MOU will appear for council.
Correct. As City Administrator Newton said, you'll either hear back from us that we are not getting concurrence or you'll see the MOU, which would be concurrence.
Right, yeah.
Staff will have conversations with them. I don't think that we're going to draft an MOU collaboratively. I think that staff will meet with them ahead of time to say what the requirements are from council, what we heard from council.
Just engage them.
What we have to do because we're dealing with public funds, et cetera. And then I think that staff, based on those conversations, will draft an MOU.
Great. Thank you so much, Jennifer, for all your work on this. And now you get to pause for a little bit. I mean, you don't really get to pause, but kind of. But thank you very much. It's usually. Say, have a good night.
Now I've got a study session I have for next.
Staff are now trying to get ahead of time to get stuff ready. Thank you, Mo, for being here, too.
Thanks, Mo.
All right. So moving, oh, yeah.
Just to reiterate what Councilmember works at is that we also have the Parks Commission law.
Yes, I saw them write that down for sure, yeah. Okay, so we'll move on to our third item, which is our cultural access program discussion. And this report will be our City Administrator Katrina Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. The memo that I presented or provided for this just gives a general overview about what has happened with this to date. Late May, you received a presentation from the Harvard History Museum Executive Director about an opportunity called the Cultural Access Program. That is a state law allowed use for sales tax increase to go for cultural programming within a set boundary. I gave you the RCW. I've taken a little more complicated program than I originally understood. Not that that's bad, but state laws sometimes can be interesting. So the, essentially, the program would be a cultural access program. It would be a one-ten to one percent sales tax increase. Traditionally done by vote of the people. The legislature stated that after the end of July of this year, now councils can approve the sales tax increase councilmanically. Councilmanically, as you know, is things that can be done by council action without going outward of vote of the public. Let's see, I put in the memo things that this can be utilized for. Let's see. Some of the things I wanted to quickly mention, the program appears to provide, again, the funding for programs such as the museum, Harvard the Harvard History Museum, Harvard Wildwatch, the Boat Shop. I don't have a list of all the agencies or organizations that will qualify for this. Moving forward, it would be helpful to have this. Something reading through the RCW with Daniel. There, there's a strong tie between this program and schools and a lot of the, the the intent language of this, one that went through the legislature, was about increasing access to cultural activities for school-aged children, in particular in underserved areas. Getting them access to culture activities, learning about the past, right? And so that's a big component of this. I know that Seth is an audience, but I will not ask for inappropriate, but I did speak with representatives from the school district and it did not appear that they have been, that they have not been kind of proposed this and how that would work. So if this were to move forward, we would need to ensure consistency with the school district. Looking at this as well, if it wasn't acted, there is an administrative fee that can be taken off the top. The one-ten, the one percent would net just over a million dollars in good times. So for right now, it would probably be a little bit less than a million dollars that would be collected. And there is an administrative component of this for managing a program that is created, receiving receipts, giving funds. It's a lot like LTAC, but kind of not. This is the thing, thing different, but this would actually be the creation of a program. So the City of Giff Harbor would have to have a cultural access program that we would need to ensure that funds were being expended by. And so that would be incumbent upon us as the administrative organization to undertake that. I was able to talk to Olympia and Tacoma, and in both of those instances, from the folks that I talked to, they had a program set in place prior to going out to the voters. In our instance, we don't have a program set aside, but we do have organizations within our community that could benefit from this funding. So it really is a good opportunity for ensuring cultural access in our community stays long-term with funding issues that we all know are existing, especially right now. So if this were to go forward, we would anticipate we would hire an additional city staff person to get the program up and running and to administer the program. The remaining funds would be doled out to the available organizations, which again, I've mentioned three of them. I don't have a list of the entire groups in Giff Harbor that would be eligible for this. They would have to be located within the City of Giff Harbor. They could do work outside of Giff Harbor. So if they were going to Vaughn Elementary or Evergreen or having those kids come into the city, that is something that could happen as long as the organization's within the city limits. If we're going to, I believe the request was to either adopt this councilmanically or to put it on the ballot for November. If we were going to do that for November, you would need to adopt a resolution at your July twenty-fourth meeting to direct staff to conduct the work necessary to get this on the ballot for November. That is unanticipated work that we did not plan for. So we would need to talk about offsetting that somehow, getting all of that prepped. Additionally, this would be a City of Giff Harbor ballot measure. This would not be a Harvard History Museum ballot measure or any other organization. This would be the City of Giff Harbor going out and asking to raise sales tax. And I say that just for, not putting my personal opinion out here, because I definitely see value in this and love the organizations you talked about. But you as policymakers and fiduciary folks responsible for the city, you know that there's pros and cons to taxation and ballot measures. So again, I just lay that out there for, for all of you. Within the memo, I provided five options for you because we do need direction from this. Number one would be to direct staff to bring this forward for councilmanical approval. That could be now, that could be later. If you choose to go councilmanically, there is not the July twenty-fourth deadline. We would, I believe it would be the end of August. We would have to get this done because we would need to let the state know by November to start taxing in January. So we, there's a little bit more time if you choose to do this councilmanically for taxes to increase in January. The second option is to direct staff to prepare a resolution of support for placement on the November ballot. Again, that would need to be done on, at your July twenty-fourth meeting, and then we would quickly work to prepare this for inclusion on that November ballot. I will let, just for full transparency, the fire district is on for a bond right now in the August. They have indicated if it does not pass in August, they will be going in November. And we also have recently learned that Penn Math will be going for a levy lift in November. So I say all of these things, pieces of information for you. The third would be to direct staff to place this on our twenty-twenty-four work plan for further consideration, analysis and potential action. This could include creating a stakeholder group to include the museum and other stakeholders to determine what a program would look like and strategize how this could be effectively implemented or started within the city. Four would be to direct staff to place this on our twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six work plan for further consideration. And the fifth would be elect not to further consider this matter at this time. And that effectively concludes my report, but what we are asking for is for council to provide direction on one of those options so that we know what the expectation is on work for us moving forward.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you. As far as the cultural access program, this were put into place, is it something you'd like to put the city to go and so we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel?
I, I've worked here since twenty sixteen and I don't know, I haven't heard anyone that says that we want to. I, I've worked here since twenty sixteen, and I don't know, I haven't heard anyone that says that we want to copy something from somewhere else.
We could use, we could use some of their, the best part of theirs.
Yes, and, and I think you've received a number of letters from folks that are part of the Tacoma Creates. And reaching out to Olympia, they're more than happy, very responsive, in fact, to kind of give information and. So yes, we could do that, but I think we would want to make it Big Harbor.
Well, yeah, that's what I think. We take it.
Councilmember Harper?
Yes, thank you. I am a huge supporter of culture, cultural access and arts access and all that kind of thing. I'm really concerned, though, that this program is a lot more complicated than we first understood it to be. And it involves a lot more creating on our part, even working with Tacoma or whichever community we decide to work with. So I'm, I'm really concerned about the amount of staff time that would be involved in it right now, and in my opinion, that staff time that we just don't have. What I would like to see is. This working with the Creative Arts District Group. And coming up with some sort of an overarching plan of cultural and art in Big Harbor and what that looks like in the future. So that we can look, we can look holistically at what we want to do and who we want to be. And I would, so I would like to see it on the twenty eight, twenty five, twenty six work plan. Just before the meeting, I sent everybody an email that I got from Brett Mason at the Foss Waterways. I had asked him some questions when he sent an email to us about, I wanted to know about the staff time as well as. The money that they spent in putting the program together, and I think if you look just at the two graphs that he included. This is an enormous undertaking for us, and I'm really concerned about our trying to do it right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Liggins?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the excellent report and all these different options. I was looking kind of between option one and option three. And the reason I was considering it for councilmanic approval is when we ran the numbers last time, I believe the impact was. Based on just kind of averages spending and what this would do with the tax, it was less than ten dollars a year, if I remember right. That would be an actual impact, so less than a dollar a month. As far as a tax increase, you know, if it were a larger tax increase, such as property tax or something, you know, that would really hit just the residents of Big Harbor. I would be concerned, but because our population grows so much during the day with so many people shopping. And potentially, this program could benefit the entire community, but less than ten dollars a day didn't feel like something that was beyond what I would consider for council, or even less than a dollar a month. Impact to people's budgets. I do understand concerns about economy, and I completely appreciate your point about the number of. Tax levy limits that people can get in exhaustion of, okay, they're asking me to increase this, this, and this. That's a bit much. You know, with all these things, so I was considering councilmaning, but a couple of questions. Is what would the impact to staff be if we wanted to do a councilmaning this year to have something together by the end of August? And then throughout the next year, throughout the tax bill collected, could we develop a thinking program? Or do you have to have that kind of setup beforehand?
That's a really good question, and I apologize, I didn't. I found out the answer to that after I wrote the memo, so you make, you do bring up a good point. So this is approximately ten dollars. Roughly, as you said, this will not just be for residents, because we grow to, I think PSRC said we were growing. Twenty three thousand during the day, some days, and so a lot of those folks are coming in, so this will not just be city residents paying the extra sales tax as we know. So that's a really good point. The, 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 the reason I'm giving you the pros and cons of both councilmanic and going out to the ballot on all of those fronts is it's. Something definitely considered councilmanically would be less money, so we wouldn't have to place it on the ballot. It's a lot more work to place something on the ballot. But I say that with, you know, I don't know, it's up to you guys, you know. How that, how that works, but definitely councilman is less work for us. With the program, if it's passed councilmanically and we're able to get that for the state by November, the tax would begin in January. We wouldn't be able to collect it until the following year. There is a mechanism for the city to recoup our upstart costs. Once we get our first distribution of the funds. So the council, if we, if we do that, we would just have to know that we would be expending funds upfront, and that we would take those out of the first year's kind of profit. And that would also lower the profit for the organizations for that first year. But theoretically, after we're upstarting, we have reimbursed them the, any administrative costs that, any of the funds that are not taken out administratively would go to. The organizations. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I have two other just quick clarifications, and then certainly hear from other people, but. Any estimates on the cost of administration? I believe one letter that we got had an example from was Spokane. That said that there were, you could do it with a profit that sets up that manages the program outside the city. Do you, what's your opinion or thoughts on that? And then the other thing is, before I would want to consider this for councilmanic approval, I noticed. In some of the process and the documents discussed with the school board, you know that the school board had a significant economic. You know, shortage, and that they just have to do some layoffs and cutting. I just want to make sure before we consider the councilman, that the school board is somehow involved. And, and I would like to know that they're, you know, that they're supportive of it, because is there work that they're also going to have to take on, but maybe they don't have the resources?
A good question. I don't have the answer to it, but I can definitely get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember.
A couple of things I agree with council member Mike and having school board on board and talking to them first. Before we do anything councilmanically, I'd also ask council member Mike, and said, when she speaks, she wants to speak just a little bit louder. I can see that people in the back can't hear you, nor can I. And secondly, since there is a educational portion of this, and since it is ran by the state. Is the state going to direct the curriculum? I'd be very nervous of that. And I think that's something we have to look at.
They would not direct the curriculum, and the part of the funding of this that the tax can be used for is actually paying for the transportation. To get the, the kids to the organizations. And so Stephanie was speaking at the Downtown Waterfront Alliance this, this morning, and she mentioned Evergreen Elementary at the base of Key Peninsula. You know, they, they don't necessarily have a lot of funding to go to field trips, so this program actually could work with that, those particular schools to provide them. Bus rides to the history museum or bus rides to the boat shop or things like that.
Something for us council members to also consider, not only is it more time and more costly to put it on a ballot, but there's actual fee for putting it on the ballot. So that's even more expensive. So just to reiterate, I think we should. Have conversations with the school board before the council makes any decisions.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. I don't support councilmaning. I believe this should, anytime we raise taxes, we should go to, go to the people. I am interested in learning more, because I think that we had an email from Stephanie. About a nonprofit running this, so it would not encumber the city of Big Harbor. Did you have a conversation with this Lyle about this? Do we know anything more about this nonprofit that could run this and set up? A new person hired by the city?
We, we have not had those discussions. I wanted to hold off this, again, this was not an anticipated work item for us. So all of the work that we're doing to research and talk to people, this is all. Unanticipated, and so I did not want to expend those, that time until I know if council was going to want to further evaluate this. So the answer to that is no. However, it would need to be a five oh one C three nonprofit that is not going to be seeking funding from this cultural organization. So Harvard Wildwatch, the museum, the boat shop, they would not be eligible to take this on. It, there's various feelings about, you know, how taxpayer dollars should be managed, and if they, and so I would just offer to the membership here that. Managing it through the city, we do have a lot of checks and balances with our finance department, who has a stellar record. Of ensuring that taxpayer dollars are spent appropriately, and so that's something to consider. We would need a five oh one C three that is not going to receive this funding to step up and offer to run and step, step up and do this. Which would need to be approved by the council for various things, so it can be a little more complicated.
Right, so I, I'm very supportive of this program. I think it's a wonderful program. I think it's a great way to sustain some of these nonprofits. But the more that we talk about this, and the more that I consider July the thirteenth and August the first. I have major concerns that we have the time to get all these questions answered. And so I, I tend to say, let's, as much as I really don't want to say this. I tend to say, let's put it on the twenty twenty five work plan. I would like to get it done sooner, but I, I'm just not supportive of councilmaning. So, so that's, I, I, I hate to do this, but I do stand for four.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, thinking for that, we would need it by the end of August for councilmaning. Not the.
Right, no, I'm, I'm talking about going to the voters. You'd have to have that by August first.
Oh, yeah, you're correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I don't think there's enough time to get ready for the voters. And to get all these questions that we've been asking, I'm not sure, considering July thirteenth and August first, that I know that there's enough time to get those questions answered, especially.
It's a tight turnaround.
It is a tight turnaround, and, and this is a program that I really think is wonderful, but, but I just, I just think there's just too many questions right now, so. So that's why I'm supportive of four.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, I do agree that we need to talk and speak with the school district on this and get their feelings about it. I also think there's an opportunity to do a councilmatic approval, but there has to be a lot of communication with our residents in the community around here. And again, I think this is a great program, knowing how difficult funding is getting, inflation happening. I mean, everyone's budgets are. Becoming smaller, trying to do a lot of these wonderful programs that we have in this community, so I would support moving it at least to the twenty five work plan. Speaking with the school district and then really doing a, a strong communication plan out to the community. Before making the determination, should it be go to the voters or should it be councilmanic?
Great, thank you. Councilmember Henderson?
If we moved it to the twenty twenty five work plan, the earliest it could even start would be twenty twenty six, right? Or potentially even twenty twenty seven.
Um, it all depends how quickly it goes. I, I can't remember which one of you said, kind of how it could potentially marry with the creative. Now I'm getting the names mixed up. Yes, and how they could potentially work together. It seems that they have worked together in other organizations. So i- if there's a plan that's put together through that, which I know is on its second meeting, and has a whole list of stakeholders and kind of to do, and it's kind of. Taking off with that is formed with little staff resources, then something theoretically could be ready to go sooner than that. It, maybe.
But it wouldn't be sooner than twenty, well, it couldn't be sooner than twenty twenty five, if we wouldn't start work on it, which means if, even if we, unless we get a councilmanic. That would not start until the January.
I believe, I believe if you all want to send this to the vote of the people, we're, we're telling you the deadline for November, but you also have the option of. February, April, August, and then November, so I believe you could send this to a vote of the people at any of four of those opportunities next year as well.
It could actually be done in twenty twenty four.
It could be, but the one thing that I will say again is that this was unanticipated staff work, and it will take time to, to come this.
But well, I mean, I don't know if that's, that'll always be an issue, no matter what work that we do.
I, I realize that. My job as the administrator oversees all of the staff work on all the other projects that council has directed us to do. It is my job to help.
I like the idea of seeing if, and I brought it up earlier, but seeing if the creative arts group can take this on as part of what they're doing. And if they, as part of what they're doing, can get their plan together before the twenty twenty five work plan. Then they can bring it to us and we can decide what to do at that point. I think they have some amazing form of movement. I know there's also a capacity issue with. The end of the organization that may take it on. They don't have a lot of staff time either, so I think that. Everyone's dealing with these same issues, but let's see if they can add it to what they're doing and come back sooner. Than the twenty twenty five with the plan.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Liggins?
Yeah, just to clarify, I appreciate Councilmember Wilk's talk of asking, going to the people for the, I appreciate that. From what I understand, doesn't it cost around sixteen thousand dollars to put something onto a ballot?
It would be less in November, because we already have three council positions going, so we're going to be paying the Josh Paul. Our city clerk Stecker called the county, and they said it would be between five thousand to fifteen thousand. To put an additional measure on, but it would be less because we have, it wouldn't be the whole twenty plus, because we do have council seats on.
If we did it at a different time, because of the workload with staff right now, and we were to do it next year, then it would be more?
It would be more if it was a, if it was our standalone, if it was our only item on, and it would be even more if we were the only thing on.
So just.
One thing, I meant ballot measure.
I got you. I got you. So just thinking about, I appreciate that we want to put it to the people, that that's the people's taxpayer dollars. That are going to be paying for putting that on the ballot. So that's actually going to cost them a fair number of tax dollars compared to the less than a dollar a month. You know, with the sales tax increase. Just something food for thought to think about is we are actually spending taxpayer dollars. To say, hey, can we increase your taxes? I know it's like a spiral, but just trying to be a good fiduciary team of responsibility.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Yes, while I said I was for number four, I'm also for number three, if we can get this working faster. To put it with a cultural district, cultural arts district, and if that can happen in twenty four, I'm good with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson?
Just thinking on the cost for it on the ballot, could that be taking out the administrative fees and the culture if it worked out?
I don't believe that we can take election fees out of the administrative over, overhead of the grant. But I, I think.
Yeah. If we could, then I would answer the question, that we can get clear dollars for this.
So out of the five options, I have three of you in favor of option four, one in favor of option three. So I don't have a consensus of council for the twenty twenty four work plan or the twenty twenty five work plan, but it seems like. It seems like there's general, general consensus to put it on one of those work plans and see what that other group comes up with, and if we can do it. Sooner, great, and if not, and so would you all be in favor of putting it, putting it on the twenty twenty four work plan?
Yes, yeah.
And then if it isn't ready, we move it to the twenty five work plan?
Yeah, okay, so, and, and I think that we do that with the stipulation that we work with the creative arts group.
As well as the school board.
Yeah. Yeah. School board and the, and the creative arts district, people together, make sure that everybody is talking to each other, we're talking to them as well, and seeing. How all of the three pieces would come, come together.
It's option three and a half.
Yeah, yeah. And say, first, Stecker.
My, my ears were burning. Did, did you have a question for me?
Don't let her go down there. I was just thinking, you can set up special. Groups, Josh, what are those called?
Oh, ad hoc, an ad hoc committee.
An ad hoc committee to look at this, where we could have a member from, you know, have the school district, the arts, um, the executive director, the history museum, and the boat shop and. People get together and kind of talk through some of this and report back to the mayor and council on findings. Yeah.
Those types of groups are much more effective if they're established by the mayor or the city administrator, so we're not dealing with OPMA requirements. Um, so we can convene a group of people. Uh, that's probably a good way to go because there isn't technically a Creative Arts District group at this point. We don't have a formal group of people, it's just some people that get together because they're interested, so we don't really have anybody to work with for a group like that. So the city would need to create some kind of a formal task group, and I think that would be best done by the city administrator in this instance.
And can I just do that, Josh, or do they need to direct me to do that?
No, you can do that on your own.
Okay, I think that that's, if that's what council's direction is, I'd like to get that out there. I know that, um, the executive director of the history museum. Has done a large lift with this, and I think, you know. Kind of getting this out into a, a, a task force, if you will, to look at this and provide answers back to the council. Uh, would be what I would recommend.
Seeing a lot of money.
So we will forego one through five and go to. Ad hoc committee. Yesterday, we added a, what is it, administrator's admiration category.
Yeah.
To the car show, so, there we go.
Okay, so if we're gonna do that, I, I, I can pull this together with little, uh, without. A lot of staff time, and so if we can get this moving quickly and get some of these things answered, we won't wait. Yeah, so.
Sounds great. Thank you for the suggestion. Yes, we can definitely take a break, so it is four fourteen, we will reconvene at four twenty. Welcome back to the Kever City Council Study Session on Thursday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, the time is four twenty-two P M. And we are on our fourth discussion item, which is our twenty twenty-four Fourth of July event session, and. I believe this report comes to us from the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so Fourth of July event, so in the budget process for the twenty twenty. Three twenty-four budget. I know where, um, the council added in, um, two hundred thousand dollars over the biennium for a Fourth of July event in the city of Kever. We have been in talks with the Downtown Waterfront Alliance to potentially, uh, to get ideas and potentially manage that event for twenty twenty-four. Uh, Fourth of July season, however, as, uh, looking through the budget during the budget presentation that we had. Date noting that sales tax, uh, is down as well as development revenues. This expenditure not being tied to something that is a requirement, we thought it proved to come back to council and see if that is still something that. Um, you would like to expend those funds on or something that we should pause for now and keep those funds in, in the general fund. Um, that really is the purpose of coming here today, the Downtown Waterfront Alliance and speaking with them, being transparent that we were having this conversation. They did offer some feedback downtown that's, uh, that they've been hearing from the, uh, presidents and businesses downtown about. The amount of events that are occurring in the summer that it's impacting, um, impacting the area, the farmers markets. I believe they used to, uh, get just under two thousand visitors a day, and now there are over thirty-two hundred visitors, um, every single time, which is great. Uh, but the businesses downtown, some of them have said that the visitors go straight to the market and don't visit their restaurant and don't visit the retail. Um, in the addition with, um, weekend events as well as the Tuesday's concerts. The, the general consensus that I felt was that that was impactful, um, to those that are living downtown as well as the businesses. So I offer that for your information, uh, only at this one. Um, Carrie Anne Hefford, the executive director of the Downtown Waterfront Alliance, she said, hey, if we don't have, you know, if there's not a, a big budget for this. That we could do something that is small, um, the mayor had an idea about a, a, a kid bike parade at night with, um. We call those things. Thank you, I am so sorry, um. Been a long week, um, glow sticks, um, Carrie Anne said if the, if the rover shut down, it could be cornhole, hot dogs, you know, things, things like that could be, that could be done for a much more modest. Um, amount, or she, this morning, offered that if there was any kind of, of funds that. The council did not set aside just for Fourth of July, that she has a series of five events to get people downtown during the shoulder season. Um, for New Year's, for, um, Valentine's Day, St. Patrick's Day, and then kind of a mid-winter. Kind of fest, so I throw those out there as ideas. I know that Carrie Anne has, is recently on board with ideas. But two hundred thousand dollars is quite a bit of money, and again, with the budget as it is right now, wanted to come back to make sure that that's an expenditure. Or determine if that's an expenditure the council would like us to expand. Okay, thank you, um, Councilmember Henderson?
Thanks. Um, well, I know one of the reasons why we pledged it for this was that we had quote-unquote taken away the fun of Fourth of July by banning fireworks, which unfortunately. As we saw, we had rather, what I'd say, meager clients. Um, I understand it's a lot of money. One thing I saw this as getting everybody down there, and maybe fewer people doing fireworks because we'd have something like a drone show or something, but they're, whatever we could afford. Um, I think the issue of people not stopping at the businesses is a valid one, but I think there's other reasons for that, just because we're having to do that stuff down. Because quite frankly, people were using that for, for commuting, not, it's not attracting people, people aren't stopping and going. So, I mean, I guess my gut feeling is, if we have the money, we should try to use it and give something to the people back, and maybe we can get a little bit better compliance on. Fourth of July, if you're not, if you're downtown watching something neat, you're probably not going to go back and shoot on fireworks, and. We banned fireworks for very good reason, for safety reasons, for E T S D on people, on animals, and also on fire after itself.
Um, just for clarity, during the budget, we did indicate that it likely would not be on Fourth of July, that it would be around Fourth of July because of, um, the officers needing to be. On patrol, uh, it'd be very impactful to them as well as city staff with family events that weekend, so it was going to be a celebration that was not occurring on the Fourth of July evening. Um, thank you, Councilmember Wood?
So I was talking with, I had a meeting with Carrie Anne last week, and we were chatting, trying to think of something to do for this citizen. Who live there, and I, I, I like that idea of a little native thing, I was telling her, I don't think we can do this, but. I was telling her about another, uh, uh, city in, in a small city in Washington State, and they supply, uh, shortbread. Uh, strawberry shortcake, strawberry shortbread cake. So, but I, I, you know, I like the idea of, uh, something smaller and you cut the budget down a little bit. Um, on the third, or, you know, whatever we can work out, huh? Just to get a community feel of community down there and have a celebration for our community. Um, I, I'm surprised to hear, uh, Councilmember Henderson, uh, comment about fireworks, because in my neighborhood, they were much better this year. And so, um, so, but anyway, um, yeah, I'd sort of like to do something smaller and. See if we can not put something together, hopefully we can put something together for downtown for our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Barber?
Yes, I, um, agree with Councilmember Wood. I think that we can do something much smaller, um. I was actually thinking that we reduce the budget to fifty. Yeah, um, and do what, like we're talking about, I think we can get some. Also some corporate support if we need to up that budget, um, the. The event that we had in Anchorage was almost one hundred percent paid for with corporate, corporate contributions. Um, actually, it was one hundred percent because it was a private entity that was putting it on, we had no city dollars. Um, but I think we could do a children's parade, a kind of a family Fourth of July event that would be really fun. Game, uh, yeah, I think it would draw a lot of people down, and we could do an ice cream contest kind of thing. I think there's some really fun things we could do. I'd love to help.
I mean, Councilmember?
Yes, thank you. Um, I agree, um, with what you both said. I think doing something smaller, simpler, or. Like you mentioned, city administrator can meet some of the, um, like the glow parade, um, I've seen, you know, with kids and pets. And have some games, have strawberry shortcake, something simple. I just remember reading in A W C what people wanted. And one of the things they were really looking for in government was community events, was community get-together to be able to be with their neighbors, feel what's going on. And you just get that great sense of community when you go to those events, whether it be concerts or fun or, or whatever. And, you know, I don't think it needs to be two hundred thousand dollars. I definitely would not want to spend that, particularly in light of the recent. That forecast, you know, does it even need to be fifty thousand? I don't know, you know, maybe we turn it to downtown and come up with a very modest budget.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber?
Yes, I definitely don't want to spend two hundred and a half dollars, and I think it should be something smaller, neighborhood-like. Uh, you know, hot dogs, strawberry shortcakes, fine. Uh, when we're talking about shutting down the street, though, keep in mind that. Seems like a simple thing, but it costs about seven thousand dollars to shut down the street, but police, police time, volunteers, moving all the. The blockade and everything, so I would suggest maybe I would, reallocating thirty thousand dollars from that two hundred thousand, saving a hundred and seventy. My neighborhood was complying with the, uh, ban on fireworks. That, it wasn't, there wasn't a single one in my neighborhood, which usually there's one.
There was very few, I understand.
And if you recall, the police chief's report, there was only ten calls out, and three of those were outside of the city. I'm speaking, Roger, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Bike door, right?
Take the bus.
So I think that, uh, we had great compliance.
Oh, thank you. You will have, um, a time for all of us to talk about that at our next study session.
Yes, um, okay, so consensus is to make it smaller, not spend two hundred thousand, and, um. Do you, so would you like to direct the city theater, city administrator, Higson, to talk with, maybe talk with Carrie Anne a little bit more, talk with the chamber of commerce? And maybe see if there can be kind of some partnership on a smaller, more neighborhood. When, and I would think, you know, shutting down the road is, um, it is expensive, however, it is a lot safer. If you're going to bring thousands of people down to the park, because you know thousands of people will come for them. So it is safer, but having it not on the fourth is so that our public works staff and our police don't have to be there on a holiday, you know, working overtime and. Working it off on a holiday.
Um, which is always not fun on a.
It's not fun to name their feet. Yeah, it's a mandate of people, and, and, but you know, there is a way within Scansy Park because there's that paved trail. That little bike parade can just literally be like right along that little paved path, you know, it doesn't have to be like the whole street or, you know, anything like that. It can be just really something cool.
Um, but you know, it's like listening or going to the history museum and re- remembering about the round rock. You know, contest, you think back at when Kever was first, you know. Founded and events really happened, you know, the rooster races, that wasn't expensive. You know, going out and finding round rocks and showcasing them and kind of the fun of that, you know, something that is even fun prior to the event. And that's kind of what Carrie Anne and I were talking about, getting to something, maybe we start something small here that can be, oh yeah, in twenty twenty-four, they started the kid electric bike parade. And it continues for twenty years, right? And I think that that's a, a good legacy to have, something like that. Um, Councilmember?
Yeah, I, I'm appreciating everybody's comments. I also was listening now about potential funding needs that might come up for the shoulder season. And I think we all know that, you know, when the, when the gray clouds and the rain comes again, which it will at some point. It gets pretty quiet down there, so making sure that we can be supportive and help the businesses down there would be great, so. I don't know fifty thousand, right, or thirty thousand, right? I'm in agreement with reducing that amount, especially with Carrie Anne and so creative on things, but there may be a portion that we can. Use for that as well. I love the idea of the children, and I love the idea of something well, because I really think you start watching that and they really get into it. Really get into it, so.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Barber?
Yes, okay, um, I would like to see us do something a little bit more than the glow parade. That involves creativity from the kids. When we were little, we had a little neighborhood parade, and we went, I think we walked two blocks. But one year I went to Ros, my brothers dressed up at fireworks, they had, you know, we could do some creative. Yeah, we could do a costume contest around the Fourth of July, and it was really, it was really fun. Of course, the Democrats won every year, but, you know, so that's why it was fun. Well, gee, no, but it was, it was really fun, and then you had those old passion gates that we were talking about.
Yeah, it was a blast.
Councilmember? It, it used to be when we first, um, came here twenty-some years ago, that the maritime parade had part of the park for kids. And they did the, eh, in the spoon race, and they did the legged race. And I don't know why that ever stopped, but it was a lot of fun, and the kids really loved it, so, you know, I think that there is an opportunity here for. To bring the kids down there. I'm in favor, I think, of closing the street, at least that one block, just because of safety, you know, but, uh, but yeah. I think that's a great opportunity here.
Is, would council be okay if you did a ceiling of fifty thousand dollars and I can work with Carrie Anne, and if we can do the Fourth of July. Community event for thirty-five thousand, that the additional fifteen, if she had a plan put together for. Some, I know, for some of the extra events that everyone could come down and, you know, they're, they're talking about like a trauer crawl, you know.
She has some really cool ideas.
And things like that that could really use a, a little boost, um, I would obviously come back for approval from council on any contract.
Yeah, I think Chamber can do a good job getting some corporate sponsorship, you know, Penn Light is always right there with something.
Penn Light just reached out two weeks ago to see if there were sponsorship opportunities, so. Councilmember?
Yeah, so what I like about the idea that we propose for the Fourth of July, it's more equitable, right? Some people don't have bikes or whatever, and so these opportunities with. Those games that we used to all play with, uh, it seems like they're a little bit more affordable and they help with each other, um, greater group of people, so I think that's wonderful.
Anybody can find a rock.
Everybody can participate.
Yeah, we even buy walk, so, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, council. Yeah, thank you so much, um, city administrator, all for your work and collaboration with Downtown Waterfront Alliance, it's going to be, it's going to be good. Okay, um, we have twenty-two minutes left in our meeting, and we're down to our last item, amazing. And then this is our flag display policy discussion, and the report comes to us from our city clerk, Josh Stecker on the screen.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. Um, so we are bringing this back to you, uh, the flag display policy for discussion, we have to set our study session on June fifteenth. Um, council gave us direction to prepare an ordinance adopting a flag display policy, and you'll see attached to the, yeah, to the memo in the packet, the. The structure of that ordinance that, uh, will be adopted in accordance with what council wanted to see. Um, we're coming back to study session again because we heard from some council members that there was some confusion about the flag pole out front. Um, during that study session, we talked about installing a second flag pole so we could fly additional flags out there. Um, I don't believe it was clear to council that we do have the ability out front to fly two flags simultaneously. Um, so we do fly the P O W M I A flag underneath the American flag, uh, we can change that out with other flags, um, as needed. Uh, the P O W M I A flag is required to be flown on specific dates, I think there's about eleven or twelve each year that we have to have it out there. Um, but when it's not being flown, we can fly another flag underneath there. I think Councilmember Lichten has provided examples of other cities that do that, they'll fly the pride flag underneath the American flag in June out front. Um, and I just want to make sure that council was aware of that. Um, the other flag poles that we have, the flag at Scansy Park, that one really can only have the one American flag on it. Um, when we have to lower that to half mast, it's pretty close to the ground level and there's not really. Um, when we have to lower that to half mast, it's pretty close to the ground level and there's not really room for anything else to fit on there. Um, the flag pole at, uh, Kenneth Leo Marvin Veterans Park, that one can have two flags too, and we do fly the, um. The P O W M I, M I A flag there on the appropriate days, even though we're not required to, we do that because it's a veterans park and we want to acknowledge that, so. Um, I just wanted to bring that information back to council, just to make sure that you're aware of that and see if that changes your. Recommendations for what you'd like to see in the ordinance, um, and I'll turn it over to you for discussion at this point.
Yes, so, um, I sent, um, Josh and Katrina, and I believe Katrina. A picture, oh, sorry. Thank you. A picture of the city of Percrest, I was there over the weekend and I was there in June. And at their city hall, they had the American flag with the pride flag underneath it. So I sent that picture and asked, can we have, you know, the pride flag outside? I think having the pride flag outside shows our community that you are welcome and accepted. And I like this ordinance, but I would like to see during the month of June that we fly the pride flag outside underneath. With the exception of the days, of course, you know, with Flag Day, um, I'm the daughter of a, of a veteran, so believe me, I know the importance of that. So definitely, but I, I think it would be great for that community, you know, one thing this. Quiet event that we had in, you know, a group of people that came together and put it on was such a great event. We got so much positive feedback. So many people said they felt welcome. I forwarded several, several onto our city administrator. And one of my favorite things was, I heard this actually secondhand from another council member, is that one person that said. Ted Lasso will love this. So, and that, and it felt like that kind of day. It was, um, was a really positive one for our community. Many people said they felt accepted and welcome and it was really meant a deep moment to them. Many personal stories. So I would really like to do this. I would like to see it inside council chambers, but I would like to see it as well as it outside as well. To not only our community, but also our staff within our by, I'll do B T Q, I think it's important.
Uh, Councilmember.
Yeah, a couple things. Uh, first, I'm against any flag except the American flag being flown on the American flag. Beneath it, except maybe the state flag. I think that's, uh, the reasons it should answer their own. I don't recall. When we decided to fly the, or have the Pial tribe flag on the days. Uh, I knew we were gonna have one month for November and I think Indigenous Peoples' Day in October. Uh, and I don't know how it ever got. Changed to all the month of October and all the month of November.
I asked the same question and he, I don't.
Well, I would like to see it only on Indigenous Peoples' Day and then the month of November, but not for two months.
Uh, the flying the flag in October and November for the Pial tribe, that was adopted by council resolution, I believe in late twenty nineteen. I can look up the exact resolution, but that, that's, that's by council direction, so it's been in place for, I think.
If, when this comes before council, I'd like to amend that. And that would be my intent.
Yeah, so that, that amendment we would put into this ordinance if that's what council chooses to do, it should be stated in this ordinance.
Would, um, would you want council consensus on that now ahead of the draft? Or would that be an amendment at, made at the meeting?
So the, the draft ordinance that was provided today, uh, is consistent with the resolution and says that the Pial tribe flag will be shown in chambers in October and November. Um, and if council concurrences to change that, uh, we should know that today so we can bring it back for first reading when it comes back.
So if there's a reason that it should be the entire month of November. Then I'm certainly willing to listen to that, but I've never heard a reason other than Indigenous Peoples' Day. One day that applies on, on Monday, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna call on everybody and then we'll do a consensus about the, that flag at the, at the end. Um, Councilmember Barbara, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Excuse me, I'm in complete agreement with Councilmember Lykins. About the pride flag, I would like to see the pride flag flown from the flag pole. As well as being in council chambers. I'd like it throughout the month of June with the exceptions that are in the current policy. And I also just want to add about the event, it was just one of the happiest days that I have ever seen in. A city, but especially in Good Harbor. Everyone who was there was, was happy and. My friend who said the comment about Ted Lasso, the beginning of his comment was that he had never seen so many happy people. Smiling for so many hours in a single location. He was at the event from six AM to four PM. He did set up and tear down. And he just, he said, I'm not exhausted, I'm just exhilarated. It was amazing. Um, as for the Pial tribe flag, I would like it to stay, um, in the policy the way it is. I believe that, no, that the month that we have it up is Native American History Month and that I'm assuming is why it's.
I can double check that, but November is the, is the month and then Indigenous Peoples' Day is in October.
Yes, and if I could just, uh, the, the reason why council back then put it up for the entire month of October is because Indigenous Peoples' Day doesn't always fall on a council meeting date. And so it will be displayed on a day when no one's actually in council chambers.
Okay, I think I remember. Um, okay, thank you, Councilmember.
Yes, I support, um, this, um. Proposal as, as written, uh, keeping, uh, the Pial fly, fly, um. October and November and also adding the pride flag on the outside. Flagpole is in addition to the extension inside at the, on the diet. For the month of June.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Henderson.
Um, I also agree with the pride flag being flown outside as well. Um, is there anything that would prevent us from flying the Pial tribe outside, say during the month of November?
They're a sovereign country. I don't think you could have.
I'd like an answer from Josh Snicker, please.
Also online, um, for this very reason.
Yeah, so the, the, there's not a legal reason to prevent us from flying their flag out front. Um, the, there's a practical reason, as far as I know, the flag they provided us is not the right size for that and isn't, also isn't, um. Weatherproof for that, so it's, I don't know if they could provide us with a flag that would work for that or not, but what they've given us to, to display is really only suitable for indoor use.
What have we asked?
Daniel, um, is there an issue with flying another sovereign nation's flag on the same pole as our flag?
Um, no, I don't think so. There are rules on how the American flag, uh, the state flag, the P O W flag should be flown. I've not reviewed those in detail, but assuming that those are all complied with, there's hierarchy and positioning and things like that. Um, I'm sure it would be fine. Um, the, 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 the nature of it being a, a sovereign nation is not. A preclusive factor to fly it as a flag.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lykins.
Um, thank you, so. I know in our discussion, we brought up sister cities. That, um, some, several ordinances that I saw showed that when sister city delegations are visiting. You can put up a secondary flag of the country of the sister city and now that we're in, you know. Making these arrangements with sister cities with Budan, Norway and Croatia. If we wanted to include that in this ordinance before, before we vote.
Daniel, question about countries, is there anything that prevents us from flying another country's flag?
I would view that to be the exact same as the tribe.
Okay, want to make sure.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Henderson.
Maybe we could ask the Pial tribe if they can supply us with a flag that would be sufficient or appropriate for the, the outdoor use.
Um, I'd like to get a consensus of council first in terms of the, the, um, Pial tribe's flag. Um, I know Councilmember Wood and Councilmember Barbara have expressed support to fly it on the diets all of October, all of November. So first, is, is there consensus from council to continue it on the diets for the entire month of October and the entire month of November? Okay, so yeah, majority support there. And then in terms of flying it outside. Is there consensus to, um, ask the Pial tribe? For another flag, I mean, is, do you want to fly their flag outside? In those months as well?
Yes.
I, I would like to see if we can just ask them.
Well, I, I, yeah, I would, I would, I'd like it.
Believe me, you should ask them first, if they even want that to happen, because they may not. Okay, and then there, there is consensus, um, of council to fly the flag, the pride flag outside in, uh, June. As well as in council chambers. Um, there, was there? And then sister cities, um, is there consensus from council to ask our sister cities? Because I would want to ask them as well. Um, and then also would there be consensus to fly their flag on our flagpole or display their flag like on our building? Because you don't have to fly, if they're visiting, you can put their flag like on the, over the entrance, that's, that's what would be actually cool. Almost like a banner over the door versus on the, the flagpole, so. And then we would of course ask Milna, Milna and Buddha if that is something that they would be, um, open to when their mayors come. Uh, if their mayors. Okay, Councilmember Martin.
So, question in regards to when we have to lower the flag at NAST or whatever, whether it's state or federal that's doing that. I would propose that we, if we had any other flag below that besides the P O W, then those not be then. Uh, there's something tragic that has happened to have a flag that's below the American flag and I think that should stand on its own. And I don't know that the way this is drafted articulates that or not.
Would there be a way to articulate that, Josh, that, uh, in this ordinance, that if the flag were to be at half. Staff, that all other flags below the flag would be removed unless it's required, you still have the P O W, uh, M I A flag there?
Yeah, we can write the ordinance that way. The, the P O W M I A flag would need to stay, but we could have the pride flag or the Pial tribe flag removed in. And instances of half mast.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll add that to the section one two two dot oh three oh. Display of flags at half staff. Do you have the direction that you need, um, Josh, for the draft ordinance?
Yeah, I think I've got everything I need. Um, the, in the ordinance language, I think I'm just going to have a provision in there that the sister city flags may be displayed. Um, on the pole, so we'll just make that flexible, you know, if the sister cities don't want us to do that, we don't have to. It'll be kind of a discretionary thing for the mayor.
Yes, and then we will, um, I will contact the tribe ahead of this coming forward in draft form. Um, and then it will either be in there or, or it won't. Uh, but I'll let council know what they, what they say in terms of flying it outside. Inside, I think they're still good with that, but. But flying it outside, we can ask, I'll ask them about that.
Will this come before council, there'll be time for public comment.
Yeah, so we don't, um, we don't have public comment today here at state, at the study session, but there will be two, uh, opportunities for public comment. First reading will be sometime is.
Twenty-four, it was going to be, although if. We won't know if we'll receive.
So probably the first meeting in August, maybe, so first meeting in August, we'll have first reading. We only have one meeting in August, so the second reading will be the first meeting in September.
Unless, we could approve it on the first reading with a super majority.
Could with a super majority with an item such as this, I would not recommend that. I would give as much time for public comment as possible, just given the emails and phone calls that I personally received. I don't know about you all. But this, um, item seems to be of great importance to our community on both sides. And so I think giving people the chance to speak twice would be the wise thing to do.
It's, it's a, it's our practice to either concede on first reading if there's some urgent. If we have not received any public comment or there's not a lot of, um, resident interest. In this, it has not been our practice to adopt on first reading if there's, um, significant comment or reporting.
So that's our recommendation. You certainly are the governing body and you can make that decision yourselves. Um, but that would be staff and my recommendation to have two, two readings for this, um, this item. Okay, anything else, um, City Park Snicker or City Attorney Kenny that you wanted to offer?
Okay.
Okay. Um, I believe. I know, we are, we, we're four minutes ahead of schedule, so all those in favor of a journey, please say aye. Okay, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.